All right. Thirty-five, six. First item on the table.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into this, under new business, we need to add one more item. It used to be weddings in the park. Bobby.
All right. Next item approval of Dean's minutes.
Make the motion that they are approved as presented.
I have a second.
You have a second.
I have most of a second to through the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? All right, Ken. All right. Nice. Next item is approval of June financial report. You have a motion?
Motion that accepted as presented.
I have a second.
I have a question. What is the bank card there?
The credit cards.
Okay, so all that is all of the credit.
Yeah.
For the two thousand two.
I have a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. I'll go ahead and break some of this down for you all. Probably only bank cards. One would be, well, basically it's not on the bank card, but card is skyscapes. Four fifty if it showed up on that one. For a figure. Is for the moss and stuff for the park. One of the items is paint for the handicap ramp and for the picket fence there. It's two fifty-seven forty-four. And it's the water, uh, park supplies for the water barrel that we use to water all the flowers and stuff on there. Come up by thirteen twenty-two, something like that. And then preparing the hot hose and stuff around the city. That was two hundred and thirty seventeen. I did order the cameras in here. Actually, real good cameras are from the vendor. It's actually kind of eight of them for common dog. The wire and stuff. We were on the, a few of those buys, you know, some conduit to run those wires in throughout the park. I'd say they had high reviews over there. They're more reviews, as I said, so anyway, we got that. So I'm not sure about the children on this color or not. But that's some of where the money went. And then, of course, you know, Ben Wells got the swings and the picnic tables done. Supplies will have five hundred. Of course, we pay him two hundred for about a hundred dollars a piece for building. He's driving. Anyway, they're installing it.
Did we get the supplies from Jeff?
Yes, 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 yes. Uh, the, I mean, I think he has, he had a couple of boards for picnic tables and then, and then, of course, all of our material is two twenty. Of course, Greg Kelly, we had repairs in the truck. We had a new rotor for it and then Greg Kelly put it on. I think that's about it. Any other questions? All right, no, no other, uh, discussion or anything? All right. All right, under new business. Jeep Fest camp. You know, a lot of places around is offering camping for the keepers that come in. People come in from out of state and out of the area. They're offering primitive camping, which means, you know, they can't spot anything. Of course, we got restaurants down there. We can talk to forty bucks down there. But anyway, I think it would be a great money making for that stuff weekend to offer, you know, to charge for them to come in and park from the back. You know, pay two acres and try to make some money to, you know, to use on the park.
Do you know what most of them are charging for a primitive spot?
Uh, no, not this year, but last year, I think it's about twenty-five, thirty dollars. One part of the trouble.
And we can get a lot of these back there.
So how would you know about what just called us?
Well, you'd go in there and market before they came in, you know, before they're here.
Now, maybe bringing campers or we just talking primitive camping?
Well, I mean, some people might bring campers and then others bring people.
There's no power, is there? They don't have a generator or something?
Well, I mean, we offer primitive and that's probably it. They have to bring their own stuff.
Primitive is no water and no power.
Anyway, that's the idea, to bring some money in. And to use.
When would you, what looks to be done?
Well, it's, uh, Jeep Fest is the weekend of Labor Day. So it's like on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then they leave outside. Some of them leave outside, maybe some of them leave outside. We would get them a free rest and send them money or leave.
We could put a link on the, we could talk to people at Jeep Fest and how to set up on their link for camping.
As long as, I don't have a problem, as long as there's not a bunch of alcohol in them, then you get rallying and, you know, crazy.
Well, I mean, we can, we can control that. I mean, there's, I mean, they never did have, in this town, they never did have any problems. Pretty much they don't sleep, get up next morning and do the trail rides and stuff. I mean, I'm not saying everybody's. I mean, he, he said he wouldn't have a problem. I mean, I would've went to bed pretty early.
Probably have his share of times you go to a tour.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we can watch it too.
I make a motion that we do primitive camping during the Jeep Fest weekend in the two acre field. Allison.
I have a motion and a second to set up primitive camping for Jeep Fest. I'll check around, make sure of the price, you know, for the bedrooms, some of others. So with that, any other discussion on that? No, all right. Uh, the next three items. You know, the road that goes on Long Street, that's called, is that Third Street?
I think it is Third Street.
Uh, Third Street, I just knew it was Terry's. I just call it Terry Road. But anyway, then Main Street along the shops and then parking lot.
Was that in permanent?
Yeah, uh, the parking lot front of the trains towards the pavement falls off. But anyway, I talked to Jamie Gravel or Jamie Godfrey about doing this while he was here. And he can get, he can do that and then prepare some of the shoulders and the road that has been washing out. Including the gravel and the labor and everything. Twenty-five hundred dollars. That's the gravel, that's four loads, four logs of gravel. Labor, the spray, you know, take yourself with it.
I don't think you beat that process.
No.
And where it falls off, it is a tripping hazard because there's a, there's about this much difference between where the gravel is and where the pavement is. So it is a tripping hazard.
So anyway.
Randy, does this, does this include the work we were talking about doing in front of the store buildings?
I have to close, prepare all the shoulders, need to prepare, fix, you know, gravel, the other stores and then the street. I don't even have a little bit for the park. Not that, not that I have to do all of it. I just been four lots. And most of this money will become a house that.
The, the.
D O T.
The D O T's bossment. Put down the line. Oh, you're talking about that one. It's like, it depends, sometimes it's like fourteen, sometimes it's sixteen, I don't know.
Somewhere around, somewhere around fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars.
It's called the L M I G grant.
So they'll earn a big fifty hundred, you know, for that. So you have to spend it on that and then the others will come out and block. All right, I have a motion and a second.
I make a motion that we hired Jamie Godfrey to do it while he's here.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to install gravel and do some work on the roads. Kind of thing to do on the road. All right, all right. A schoolhouse repairing, town hall update. Basically, I just want to let y'all know that I have found somebody that came down that was interested in help figuring out a way to level up the schoolhouse as much as possible on the front there. To replace the door, replace the oak bars because it's an interior door. And then it's set in for the rain and stuff, it didn't go to the, on the floor on the inside. So he's going to come up with a plan and provide some stuff to do back. And he, he says he can come up with a plan to do some work on the town hall there to make water. I didn't know it, but I, we went out and looked at it and all they've got on the top where, where part of the problem is, is something. And that, that ain't working. And this solution, I, it will work. He's, uh, he says the boards and stuff on the back is separated, pulled away and got gaps and stuff. That's where the water's coming in too. And some of it has come in from the metal to the block wall. Basically, he's going to splice that and then put metal between the splice and the top splice. So it's not going to be anything. So the metal's going to be replaced. So that helps get out of there, he can't really, but he, uh, he suggested.
Is Mr. Galway?
He suggested to do a final item on the back like that. So that way the water can, you know, through, you know, that.
Did they, did they see that side?
No, uh, by the side, he's saying by the side. Yeah, and, um, he's came up with a plan on the front to come look for it and stuff. But anyway, he's, he's giving you updates, he's working on the process of it. And I've got another gentleman that's working on the house down here and he's supposed to be back.
Only old schoolhouse he talking about, the place is a foot and a half?
Yeah, yeah. You know, trying, trying to level up some of the rest of it. So we can have a whole lot of money and try to see what, what protects it. So he's going to be working on that. Like I said, just wanted to give you that update on, on that. All right, uh, last item under new business, wedding in the park.
We had a lady, well, actually we had two, have another one today, that are asking to rent the entire park. In other words, they want us to close the park and only allow their wedding to take place that day. Uh, because, well, we think, now, the second one, I've got to call and see, but she's one. But the wives that I have been emailing with, she just keeps coming back with more questions. But like, will the bathrooms be cleaned, will the pavilion be cleaned? Well, yes, you know. But anyway, she's, she's wanting to know if we could stop any other visitors to the park while she's having her wedding and her reception because she doesn't want wedding fractures. Our people going through. Because I had told her that we can't close the bathrooms if we keep the park open because our visitors have to have access to everything. So my question is, is the city council willing to do that? Because if we set that precedent, then what do we do if we come up with four or five Saturdays in a row that somebody wants to close the park?
Well, what are you charging per week?
Well, I would say at least three thousand dollars if you're going to close it. That's cheaper than any venue you'll get.
Have you run that by her?
Not yet, I mean, before I went with it to her, I wanted to see what the council was going to say, whether you want to close the park or not.
How much you going to charge it?
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
And most venues charge you forty-five, fifty-five hundred for the day. Which you got to understand, they're going to want to be down there Friday night, but I'm going to tell her, I mean, we can't close the park for two days for a wedding.
But at the same time, both of these people are wanting, it's spring, that's the busiest time of the park. And what about people who receive the sign on five fifteen for bathrooms in the park and they pull in and the shops are going to be bombarded. People want to use the bathroom.
So what time does she want to have?
All day.
All day.
All day.
All day.
Yeah. But you didn't take in mind, you know, if we get three thousand at the end, I mean, we can't have it every week. But I mean, it's far enough ahead that we could, you know, let everybody know the signs. Three thousand dollars to go all the way of the replacements and stuff out there. We, you know, we need that money.
What would you do, just put a sign out and, I think, close your wedding?
And put ads in the paper.
Or on your paper.
So they do on the ads, huh?
Yeah.
Post it on the park.
But we can't guarantee. No, you can't guarantee that you, that's true.
No, I mean, you can't.
I would explain that to them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we can do what we can, but we can't stand there with guards and jolt it.
Uh-uh.
You know, that's crazy.
And, and two, now, this first one's talking about a hundred and thirty people.
Where's she going to put a hundred and thirty?
Well, that was my question, where's she going to put a hundred and thirty cars?
Yeah.
That's my question. And number two is, y'all are planning on receiving that in the fall, is that section going to be open by April? And do you want people trampling all over that degraffed?
Well, I mean, like I said, the park, we want to be able to do that down there.
Well, there's not any bathrooms or anything down there, are electrical, so she's not going to walk down.
I'm going to get you a shuttle, I'm going to tour, I'm going to shuttle.
Are you going to get a top notch?
But if this other one wants it too, then that's two weekends in a row that the park would be closed on Saturday for a wedding.
Well, I mean, I don't think we do two weekends in a row, but you know. And it has to be six, I mean, I think we have to leave that a six month or longer.
Well, both of these are different than that.
Well, I know, but I mean, but you only have one, you know, one per one.
Another two, though, I mean, you could make some money, I mean, that is true. I mean, a lot better than rented for fifty-five orders than we rented for. That's the big difference.
Hey, I have a lot of photos in my car.
It does.
But we can kind of have to give money instead, no?
Yeah. We do, so I mean, we, we need to decide what we're going to do, but she's already bombarded me. This is probably the fourth email with nifty questions, so.
Has she asked you what you were charging?
Yes.
And you said I'm not sure.
Well, I told her, when she first wanted it for a few hours, I told her what the price was, that it was fifty dollars an hour. But then she came back and wanted to know if she could do it for the whole week, if she could have the whole day, what would it cost? And so that price, I have not quoted her.
And you know what, you could call it to her and she might not be willing to pay it and it won't be out, people won't have to worry about it.
What date is this supposed to be on?
Uh, the twenty-first of April, and the other one is on the fourteenth of April.
So they are best down.
Uh-huh.
Like I said, I, I say on one. I mean, I, we were just shutting down with two.
Yeah, I thought the tick we didn't get accurate with the.
What if, what if we just get one weekend a month? Say either the first, second, third, or fourth Saturday of the month that we went on wow and all day. That way we could post it up on the thing.
And it would be a thing that everybody, and they would still run, could run ads.
And if they really want it, then they can change their date, I mean.
Well, what is it?
It's a Saturday.
Yeah, but, but.
Oh, I don't know.
Third.
Yeah, I think it's third.
Really?
So if we, if we tell her it's three thousand dollars and she says, well, they know I don't want it, then we scratch everything we talked about tonight or we?
Well, it's my option, you know. And maybe the other one would want it and just tell her it'd have to be the third weekend of the month.
Would you have to just be on it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. We would ask for half of it.
Yeah.
And that the other has to be paid one month before the actual date.
Are they setting up tents or are they just?
She didn't specify tents, she just said tables and chairs for a hundred and thirty people.
I just don't know if she wants to, nobody came in home, like, why?
And you can, I can understand because that's where they have the weddings and the pavilion, that's the main entrance into the park. And then, of course, there's going to be other people coming, if she has her food and stuff on the pavilion, then they're going to be coming there to go to the restrooms. And she's set up for the reception. And it's always worked for everybody else, but this is the first time I've ever had anybody want to rent it for the whole day. And the other girl, she wants the, now, she just specified the pavilion and the field. So I don't know if she's wanting to rent the pavilion for the bathrooms or what, but.
This lady had said she had talked to Megan.
Well, I mean, I mean, we're, say, I would have, of course, in that way, we could have it, but I'm not having a fight.
She says that she spoke to you, you're a chat one.
The second? Oh, yeah. Like she, I don't think she said, she didn't, I mean, we didn't know what they did.
I mean, the field's not a problem.
I don't know if y'all heard, but Terry was saying we should go to a little barn area out there. And, you know, like I said, again, this, you know, if we, we are able to build that within the next year or two, then this would be a money generating thing for, for the town and see the front to be open.
Probably be open and they would have the whole back and the barn and they could have the whole field, do their wedding and do whatever.
Now, we can apply for the rent again this fall. I mean, they sent me a, Aunt Renee sent me a letter and she said that she looked forward to us reapplying. So I mean, they weren't upset with us, they perfectly understood why we had to make that decision this year, so.
I think it would be a lemon making plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could.
I think you would always be with that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Something would, all right, anyway.
Rodney, you tell me what you.
Okay. I think, yeah, if we do this, we need to set something for something to discriminate against, you know, other parties. To say it has to be third weekend of the month.
Right, and we're not going to switch. Because that's not fair.
It has to be six months in advance. Deposit. And we have to advertise on weekly newspaper signs.
Well, what we can do, what we can do is, if we decide to do that and we're going to, and another thing, if we say it's for one, that certain weekend of the month, we can put a big sign up down there under the pavilion and say, this park may be closed for a wedding on the third weekend of each month.
Just say it in a bit.
Yeah, in a bit.
We need to get signs to put on five fifteen too, so.
And like I said, some companies want.
Get back the signs.
Yeah.
Rent it, rent the thing and then do the same thing.
Exactly.
So I do.
And we can take and have some signs made to go over on five fifteen and say, park was closed today. Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion. I mean, what we do, we can find units, but I guess a motion to, to pursue renting the park on the third weekend for a wedding.
Yes. To close the park for a special area on the third weekend of the month. So that's, that's not a motion. And the fee is three thousand dollars.
And as we said, we'll work out the things, but as we say, you know, six months in the night, we have to pay in a month.
No refund.
No refund of the box.
Do you get the boards before you get there that are in the box?
Whether or not?
No.
All right. So anyway, we have a motion to pursue the closing the park for the third weekend for a wedding. I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all right. All right, on to the other business.
Can you add some notes to the new business?
Yes.
Just because of what happened today, you know, this storm came up really, you know, I mean, I've got pictures. I have a popular, that's a popular.
Pop.
Thank you. It sits at the ditch down there, that big ditch that comes through, that looks like, if it's going to fall, I don't know which way it's going to go. But these limbs came off, it blew off today, the one fell, thank God, between my house and my, uh, little building, which was humongous. And then one fell out in where I used to run. Uh, so that just concerns me, but if that tree falls, it can fall on my house, you know?
Wow, is that?
Now, I don't know if that's mine or, I can show you.
I think it would actually classify being on the road out, because it sits really close to that.
So what does that mean? If it wiped my, uh, it took my. It, it, it took my, um, little girl out and we walked around, and it's, and it really scared, so I don't know what to do about it, do, I don't know, I don't have a lot of fun with that, so... Anyway, I don't know, and I don't know if it's, uh, see, see it fell, see, my house is right here and it fell in between, see my little girl? And then down here in the field, uh, two miles from my back down to, from my back to you.
Is that on all the time?
It's right in the ditch down there, right below my house.
Right, but, I mean, I mean, it's placed...
Yes, sir, this is, this is the one that this guy's...
Is it next to that old barn that's down there?
I don't know.
Well, that's my, uh, outbuilding that's, um, fallen into the, into the...
All right, if I, if I'm, if I'm standing at the, on Second Street looking at your house, is it the pop tree to the left, is there next to that old piece of a barn that sits there next to the road?
There ain't a barn there, you just have to...
Well, I mean, it's...
It's right down there at the ditch between the, it's between me and Amy. It's right down there at that, it's right over the ditch, which is supposed to be something...
Ashmere Street.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it's that street that, you know, that I got in so much trouble when I bought my house...
Yeah, I know.
With the former mayor, but I had, I had to pay more money because, I mean, it closes, telling the closing, all that presence, but, um, it's because of that ditch that they kept on, it's their street, I mean, but, so I don't know what to do, I just, it concerns...
Let me, I'll, I'll make a motion that we investigate the trees on that old road there that turns off the Second Street and see what we need to do to protect the adjoining pop beyond that street.
It wouldn't be if I had to protect all of it, a lot of it. But, I mean, I don't, I really motion for that, it's a town property, and I suppose Mike, so we meant to look at it and come up with a price, for the high, that's why.
Okay.
And then, if we find out, you know, what the price is, you know, it can... Discussion.
That's one.
All right.
If it's road maintenance, then it actually will come out, that's lost, and so...
Because that is, that's what they call that road, but, yeah.
But we'll look at it, let's see what we can.
All right. First item on the board is...
Red House, I spoke with Mr. Clark today, our attorney. He had been in contact with Mr. Thorpe, who is the one that's handling that situation. Mr. Thorpe is involved in a huge, uh, trial somewhere, so he's not got to work on it the last couple of weeks, but he had told Herman that he is at the point, he's about ready for us to write a check and take it to the courthouse. So he's hoping once his trial's over, that everyone will be ready to go and all this.
Animal control, or anything?
Um, Herman is working on the animal control ordinance. Uh, we need to have a work session to iron out some particulars to go in that ordinance. Um, I think it would be kind of lengthy to try to do that here and then we can bring it back this... Once we do it, we're gonna have to have public hearing, so it's not like we're doing anything that the public won't know about. We just need to be able to sit down and casually talk about what we want in this ordinance and how we're gonna take care of, of corn and vines, you know, for biolifers. Uh, and we have several options on how to do that. So that's where we are with that. And he is still doing some research on the, um, the instant that had a citation pulled on. Uh, he's trying to get in touch with some people to get some further information from it, some particular questions that he's asking about, so he is working on both of those.
All right, life's bad, Mike?
All right, we got the road stage, we finished planting the flowers, we got a big fence painted in between the old schoolhouse and, and started on the ground, installed the two new four swings and one swing on the kids' playground. Uh, we do need to come back and change out all the swings, the four swings, the hooks, uh, they had smaller carabiners on, some of them are for twelve cars, so we need to actually put bigger hooks on, just to sure.
That, that east wing, did y'all have down there that the kids hope love that? So it keeps plodding with that swing that's right beside it.
Yeah, well, that, that swing's gonna have to come off anywhere.
They love that, yeah.
Everybody loves it, Bryden loves it, Casey loves it.
Well, I bought, I bought that from Price's Flyer, honestly.
Well, that was ninety-six dollars, well spent, it really is. I want one of them.
Mayor? That's about it. Brian, a lot.
Lots. I will, in case anybody didn't see the progress, um, I did bring the paper with me there. With the, as y'all know, there's been meetings about the comprehensive planning, uh, comprehensive plan between the cities and, and the county, um, to work out, you know, where we want Pickens County to go, where we want the cities to go, that kind of thing. And the north, the Northwest Regional Development Center, the one who helps us by the race and stuff, is working on this. They did an online, and it was on Mary's, um, site and it was in the progress, where they asked people specific questions about what they wanted, you know, different areas in the, in the county. One of the questions was, if you have out of town visitors, where in the county would you take them? The first one was the Burt Mountain Overlook, the second one, of course, was City of Jasper. Third on that list, as other seven hundred people, was talking about it.
Yay!
And they talked about, it, they, it was our park, it was the trains, it was the stores, um, and the people that were there at that meeting were very, um, they were very impressed, they were all bragging on the park and how much they liked to go to the park. Um, so I was very proud of that, I kind of fluffed up that night because I was very proud. And I told them, I said, "Well, there's two gentlemen that take care of that park." And, um, I said, "They do a very good job," so...
Does anyone, do you have a hand? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Anything?